It is now 7:00 PM. We'd like to call this public hearing agenda meeting to order. Ms. McDaniel, would you lead us in vacation and Mr. Mayor, the pledge of allegiance, please?
Would you all pray with me, please? Heavenly Father, thank you for this evening and this opportunity to serve our city. Lord, thank you for all of your blessings. I pray that you give all of us as leaders wisdom and discernment tonight as we make decisions. And I pray that you continue to protect and bless our city, all of us that are here, and each of our residents. It's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bridgette, when you get a chance, could you please call the roll?
I'm sorry. Okay, Mr. Ring. Mr. Mishniak. Mr. Hannan. Mr. Lombardo.
Here.
Ms. Wagner.
Here.
Mrs. McDaniel.
Present.
Ms. Glenn.
Here.
You have a motion to excuse, Mr. Ring?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Motion and a second to excuse Mr. Ring. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Mr. Ring is excused. Item four, agricultural placement renewal request of Pasquale. Is that correct? A and Joe D Romano, 2580 Bartlett Road, Manaway, Ohio 44255, for 56.91 acres. Are there any comments regarding this?
Is this one of those weird areas in Streetsboro that's like technically Streetsboro but...
Yes.
I was trying to work it up on the map. Three of them all together all in a very short period of time. One side of Warner's Whore, one side of Streetsboro, the little river down to the east is Shaler Hill. West of Streetsboro is kind of a conglative thing up there.
All right. Any other questions or comments regarding this? Okay, is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned.
Yeah. I talked to you about the motion to move.
Yep.
By 26. Do you have a note on your...
Yep.
Okay.
All right, I'd like to call this finance committee meeting of Monday, March 24th, 2025 to order. Bridgette, can you please call roll?
Mr. Ring, Mr. Mishniak. Mr. Hannan.
Here.
Mr. Lombardo.
Here.
Ms. Wagner.
Here.
Ms. McDaniel.
Present.
Ms. Glenn.
Here.
Second. First and a second to excuse Mr. Ring. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. He is excused. Item four, disposition of minutes. We have the finance committee meetings of August 26th, 2024, and of January 27th, 2025. Of a motion to dispose of those minutes. Motion to dispose of said minutes.
Second.
Have a first and a second to dispose of those minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Those have been disposed of. Item five, monthly financial report. Mr. Matt Miller.
Thank you, Councilman Hannan. This is the monthly financial report for the month of February. Not too many exciting things to go over, but since we're only two months into the year. But revenues are pretty much on target at about 16 and a quarter percent. Versus last year, we're down a little bit, about 1 and 3/4 from where we were. But again, last year, actually had an extra revenue day because it was a leap year. So I think that affected things. In regards to expenses, we do seem like we're up at about 27%, but a lot of this is attributed to just how many POs get opened, and I'm okay with that. It just means we're tying up budget a little sooner. So our actual expenditures were actually down about 2 and 1/3% for actual expenditures, which of course includes payroll. And even with all of our high overtime that we had with the snowstorms, that's good to see on my end. For the entire city, expenditures are just about on target where we were last year. But again, actuals are down, and so that's good to see two months into the year. Our cash balances are pretty consistent. We're up about, roughly about $130,000 from where we were last year at this time for the general fund. The 201 fund's actually up about $400,000. That is also a good indicator because we need that money for our upcoming ODOT project, which we're slated to pay in about the third quarter this year. We'll be relying on the 201 fund heavily, as well as the 401 fund, 202 fund, and 203 fund. Only two months into the year, income tax is down a little bit. We are dealing with a couple of issues in regards to net profit. I won't go too much into the details, but we have some issues with when the state collects on our behalf. A large refund was requested, but then that same company, which seems to cause me a lot of problems, two months later, they turned around and made a huge estimated payment for 2025. And they're just kind of, not that they're playing games, I mean, I'm not a strategic tax accountant, but it just kind of messes up our numbers sometimes when they request those large refunds. And then in a few months later, they make a huge estimated payment. And it just kind of skews the numbers for a little bit. But our withholding for Rita is actually up about $41,000. We were at this point last year. So withholding's up, it's just net profit. The bane of my existence and analysis, it is just all over the place. So I'm trying to keep a handle on that. Interest income, we're about $77,000. That's ticking down a little bit, but we projected that. We're already at 56% of budget, so two months in. So we budgeted very conservative on that, so we're not as heavily reliant on it for revenues. Our water receipts through February, we're actually, we've collected about 23% of the budget. Last year, we were at a little over 21% of the budget. So our collections in relation to what we budgeted for the water fund are actually up. You can attribute that, there could be multiple factors to that, but I did want to relay that to council how our more than likely capturing revenue this time. Last year, when, you know, you look through February of 2024, we might not have been capturing all that revenue that we thought. And so this year, that, and that's to the tune of almost, it's almost in roughly $50,000, $60,000 extra that we've gotten in... No, I apologize. It's actually $100,000 extra we've gotten in water receipts versus this time last year. And of course, I've included all of the reports, the general fund carryover. Any questions on the February financials?
Questions? Ms. Pat? Doesn't look like there's any questions. Thank you for the monthly report, Mr. Miller. Item six, old business. There is none. Before I go to new business, there's a note here that we have to move our finance meeting and regular council on May 26th, which is Memorial Day. The Monday before was Bridgette's possible suggestion that we would do two Mondays in a row. Does anybody have any problems with that?
If anything important, I won't be here on Memorial Day, so I'll let it down, May 17th and 18th.
Any directors have any issues with May 19th? You have an issue with May 19th? So you can't be here?
Yeah.
Do you suspect anything large that would... I guess Missy will have to come and fill in for everybody that has to miss, so... Well, I guess we can move it to May 19th if everyone has any other suggestions. Maybe just start looking at your guys' calendars and what you guys have coming up. And if we need to make any adjustments, we can do that at a future meeting. So I'll make a, I'll entertain a motion to move the May 26th finance and regular council meetings to May 19th.
So moved.
Second. First and a second to move those meetings. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. You can count on May 19th, Bridgette, for your planning purposes. Thank you for bringing that up. Yes, ma'am.
There's a gentleman here that was here for the public hearing.
Okay.
Just came in if you wanted to speak to him.
Sure. Do we have to...
We don't have to do anything. It's going through.
It's already done.
Yeah, it's done, and I'll send this up to the county.
Sir, were you here for the public meeting, the public hearing?
Yes, I was.
Yeah, we already went through it, but if you wanted to speak on it, we'll let you, we'll give you a couple of minutes.
No, I just couldn't find it. The address that was here was the wrong address, so that's...
No, you're perfectly fine. I mean, everything is going to go through. But if you wanted to say anything or...
No, I just wanted to make sure that I continue on this.
Yeah, yeah, everything is good, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Romano, we'll send that to the county tomorrow, and you'll get another copy of your application with the outcome by certified mail again. And then, but everything's fine.
In the following years, will I have to continue? Because I've never came, I've always gone to Port County, done through...
Every five years.
Every five years?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Have a good night, sir.
Thanks, John.
Item seven, new business. I'll entertain a motion to recess into executive session to discuss collective bargaining.
So moved.
Second.
First and a second to recess into executive session. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mishniak?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mrs. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Wagner?
Yes.
Ms. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Hannan?
Yes. We are in executive session.
Mr. Knott, there are copies in the conference room on the table.
Okay, so we don't need to take ours, huh?
Because there's another, there's a substitute one, a new one. Yeah.
Okay.
He found one before we submit. Well, no, when I found, when I found the mistake, I found a mistake in executive session. I found a grammar error, and she always finds the grammar errors before me, and I found one before her.
And Tony was doing cartwheels back there, all the way up.
I've been, you have no idea how much I've been waiting to find this. My goal is over. My mission is complete. My mission is over with.
I'll make a motion to reconvene from executive session.
I'm first and second to reconvene from executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. We are back in our finance meeting. Item C, T 7747, accept the collective bargaining agreement. Mr. Knott and Ms. Lockhart Reese.
We concluded negotiations with the ass. And we discussed.
Thank you, Mr. Knott. Yeah, any questions, comments from city council? If not, then...
Motion to move T...
Hold on, we gotta amend it to substitute.
As amended, yeah.
Yeah, we have to make the amendment.
Oh, we haven't even added it.
We have to amend to add the substitute exhibit A with the mark, the completed version.
I'll make that motion.
I'm first and a second to add, or I guess replace, substitute exhibit A with the current exhibit that we have presented to us tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that exhibit has been substituted. Now you can...
T 7747 as with the amended attachment.
For first and a second to move T 7747 to full council as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that has been moved. T 7748, contracts with various vendors for asphalt paving products and services. Mr. Bill Miller.
Yeah, this is just our yearly, annual asphalt preservation program. Apologize, I was supposed to do this in January, and I just, I just realized that I forgot to do it, so that's why it needs to be passed by emergency, because we are in the patching season.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any questions from the council? I'm first and a second to move that to tonight's full council. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that is moved. T 7749, amend ordinance number 2024-138 for additional expenditures for physicals. Chief Reinhold.
Thank you. We had an annual physicals for firefighters from Unity Health Network for eighteen thousand, two hundred thirty-three dollars and seventy-six cents. Typically, we go for physicals through a university hospital. The three firefighters we hired on our SAFRA grant, they wanted a different type of physical, NFPA 1482. So we priced it out, and Unity provided the lower price by about eight hundred dollars. So I went with Unity, not thinking it was gonna put me over to twenty grand, and it brought me to twenty-two, eight sixty-two. The money's in the light item, but I can't pay them until council amends it and enables me to go over that threshold. So I apologize, I was Unity Hospital, University Hospital, and I got the two confused.
Thank you, chief. Any questions from city council on that item?
I'll make a motion to move this to tonight's regular council meeting.
For first and second to move to tonight's full council. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that has been moved. Thank you, chief. Item F, T 7750, contract with Forge County Combined General Health District for testing and inspection of storm sewer outfall locations within the city. Mr. Checkai?
Thank you, this is just a renewal of our contract with the, with the county. It satisfies one of the requirements put forth by the EPA for our stormwater permit.
Any questions from city council?
I'll make a motion to move this to tonight's regular council meeting.
For first and a second to move to tonight's full council. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that has been moved. Sorry, Tony, I thought you said something else, so I thought you had a question.
Huh.
All right, T 77, item G, T 7751, authorized replacement of computer equipment at the PD. It's listed under Mr. Kaufman, but Ms. Prokop.
Hi, good evening. This is a request to just replace the equipment that was lost during the flood at the PD. And I would like to request the not to exceed amount to be amended, up to ninety-five thousand dollars, just in case there's any hiccups during the repairs, we don't have to come back and ask for money. It's a just in case, and I believe Mr. Miller put it in the budget adjustment for tonight.
Correct.
Hold on, I'm just, I'm reading his, his letter again real quick.
And we did hear today that this is going to be refunded by our insurance, so it is covered.
Any questions from the council?
Section four, is that what needs amended to ninety-five?
Yes, please. Just section four.
I'm first and a second to make that amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that's been amended.
Thank you.
I have a first and a second to move to tonight's full council. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that has been moved. T 7752, accept the T I R C recommendations. Doesn't have a name, but I'm assuming that's Mr. O'Malley.
Yes, sir. Good evening, council. Once a year, a group of citizens meets to review tax incentive agreements that we have on the books. We have concluded that process and have judged them all on their merits. I'm asking for your acceptance tonight, so I can meet a deadline imposed on us by the state of Ohio for me to report all of that higher up the chain.
Thank you, Mr. O'Malley. Any questions from city council?
I have a question.
Yes.
Are these recommendations usually provided? I mean, we don't have any recommendations before us. Do we know what the recommendations are?
The recommendation in all cases is to continue the tax abatement.
Just to continue everybody's agendas?
Yes.
And we only have one?
There's one listed.
There is one.
That is Bolton, down the street. They hit a target that was established in the contract with the developer. So this, I think, is their, see, this is their last, I think this is their last year that they will be getting reviewed. Everything else, we do, most of our abatements, we run through the CRA program, which is separate and distinct from the Turk. But all of the CRA people, Mr. Lampo is on that committee. We met and reviewed all of those tax abatements as well, and agreed to continue them.
Any other questions? I entertain a motion to move this to tonight's full council.
Second.
Steve and Tony. All right, I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that has been moved. Item I, T 7753, amend 2025 annual appropriations number three. Mr. Matt Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Hanon. This is a pretty slimmed down budget request, just moving a few items with Parks Department. We are still advancing money into the 207 fund, which is where our SAFRA grant is located, so we're gonna continue doing that to keep the fund solvent. Some little items for 401, and then I had to, to go in, to go alongside with Missy and Matt Kaufman's computer request due to the, the flood at the police station. I'm asking, doing exhibit B, can make a motion to add that. That way, we don't have to have a special finance committee meeting in April fourteenth. That way, we can start making purchases, then our insurance company will reimburse us. So what I did was, I just did revenue for that amount, and then we'll have the expenditure for that amount. He just does not have enough money to absorb this type of purchase in his current budget. So I'm asking for exhibit B to also be included. Any questions?
Mary Ann, sorry.
This question's probably for Justin. I was just curious where the willow tree was on City Center property?
The willow tree that's coming down is actually on private property.
It's on private property? Does it additional cost for City Center to remove willow trees? Is it in the way of the fence?
Yeah, it's overhanging it, and the resident asked us to remove it because it's a hazard. So better than falling on our fence.
Right.
If there's no questions, we'll have to make an amendment.
I meant to add exhibit B.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll make that motion. Add exhibit B.
I'm first and a second to make the amendment to add exhibit B. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that has been amended. I just had a quick question real quick for Missy about the police department, and I'm sorry if I, if you may have said this, I may not have heard you, but I'm just kind of, I was reading over Matt's letter that he provided us. It just kind of throws me off a little bit, because he said it should be covered for the most part, and some of the equipment is like, still water damaged, to use other equipment he already had on hand. I'm just trying to make sure that when the insurance pays for that, like, it's also like, you know, obviously, he's using some of the equipment from another project, and I don't want that to affect another project, and we have to pay for that again. I don't know if I'm stating that, like, clearly enough for you, but I just want to make sure that we're getting the replacement for the, for the product that was damaged, or products that were damaged.
So he wrote this letter prior to us getting notification from insurance that it was going to get approved.
Okay.
And he will swap out our equipment that he temporarily put in there and put in the new equipment from insurance into the police department.
Perfect. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, no problem.
All right. With that being said, we waiting for a motion to send this to tonight's meeting as amended.
So... Second.
First and a second to move this to tonight's meeting as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that has been moved. Item eight, citizens' comments. None. Announcements, a regular council, uh, Ms. Knott, looks like you have a question.
Yes, we, as I said earlier to you, we have a liquor license.
Mm-hmm.
We'd like added to the agenda.
On regular council.
Regular council.
Yeah, we can do it, and I think generally, those are where those come in, right?
Okay, thank you.
So we'll get, we'll get that on there. With that, we have, let's see, announcements, I just messed up my pen. A regular council meeting will immediately follow this meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
First and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned.
Yeah, no problem.
Tony's time is shot now. Tony's got, he does get extra time today. He's got the president of council comments and the, and the vice president of council comments.
We could be here till eight forty-five with this.
Yeah.
Plus, the chief has to talk too, so...
All right, I'd like to call this regular council meeting, excuse me, on Monday, March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five to order. Bridget, would you please call a rule?
Mr. Ring, Mr. Mishniak.
Here.
Mr. Hanon.
Here.
Mr. Lombardo.
Here.
Ms. Wagner.
Here.
Mrs. McDaniel. Ms. Glenn.
Here.
Second.
A motion and a second to excuse Councilman Ring. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, Mr. Ring will be excused for regular council. Item three, disposition of minutes, regular council meeting of August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, regular council meeting of January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and a regular council meeting of January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
A motion and a second to dispose of all three sets of minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, those will all be disposed of. Four, citizens' comments. Any citizens like to speak tonight? I see nobody. Five, reports, communications from departments, boards, and commissions. Chief Reinhold.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardo. It's been a busy two weeks. On the eleventh, Captain Grimm and Scott Wilson for fire prevention went out and talked to homeowners association about severe weather, especially with severe weather coming up March, April with thunderstorms. And we were in a fire in Manaway on the fourteenth, that helicopter crashed on the fourteenth as well. Captain Grimm is in charge of the IMAT team, the incident management team. Plus, we sent personnel for hazmat because the oils bill, the gasoline in the lake. They handled that nicely. Then this over the weekend, we were up in Aurora for a fire. We had a little incident here in Streetsboro, and as I speak this moment, there in Auburn on a fire. So it's been kind of busy. What else have we been doing? We, we had our officers go and sit with dispatch, PD, just to see what it's like on the other side of the microphone. They have a very tough job, and they'll be understanding when they don't answer the radio right away that they're probably on the phone or doing something, trying to improve relations. And we had inspector's school, where we prepare for do our company inspections. So Captain Grimm puts the school together, we go over all the new construction in the city, go over building construction details, things like that, as well as fire suppression systems. And today, we started our company inspections, where the companies, the line guys, the suppression guys, go out and actually inspect the businesses. One, to look for violations. Two, is their building familiarization with them. And we have two guys in fire inspector's school. It's an eighty-hour skill, school. I put them on forty hours, just to save on my overtime, and they'll be done in two weeks. We'll be adding them to the ranks. That's it.
Thank you, Chief Reinhold. Chief, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hanon, go ahead.
I just had a quick question about the fires, the fire suppression systems. How do you guys test that? Like, without getting, like, how do you make sure it works without getting the room wet?
Well, they're tested by another outside agency, so they'll be tagged, just like you look on your extinguishers, there's a tag by ABC Fire Company, and we make sure that it's valid. So when we go, when we check for like the hood suppression, the pumps and everything else, that they have the documentation that's been tested.
How do you test it? How do they, like, like, they, they make it go off?
There's a test station for the sprinklers, and then they actually have to run the fire pump, and there, there's testing to do for that. So there's, there's unique testing for each of the fire suppression systems. And we, well, sometimes, when we have the time and people power to go out there and actually observe it when they do it, if not, then we see the documentation that it passed.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Hanon. Okay, thank you, chief. Chief Wayne, Police Department.
Just real quick, I will brag on the department for the first time in quite some time, knock on wood, we are actually full staffed for patrol. One of the very few departments in the area that can actually say that, so I'm pretty happy on the guys recruiting some new coworkers. And I'm not sure how much you talked about the, the flood at our department, but if, if nobody did it, a huge shout out to Matt Kaufman and Scott Herman, they saved us. I, I can't even imagine how much in money for the equipment that they managed to rescue as, and, and get us back up and running in a matter of hours versus weeks. If that had been anyplace else without those two, we, we would have been down for weeks. So they did a phenomenal job, and I couldn't be happier, because I couldn't do it. So, that's all I got.
Thank you, chief. Mr. Knott from law, do you have anything to report? Thank you. Mr. Matt Miller from finance?
Nothing more tonight.
Mr. Bill Miller? Mr. Checkai?
Thank you. Some of you may know that the Turnpike Bridge over on Page Road was hit and damaged. We have adjusted the signal timing so that the, the residents don't have to sit so long. The earliest indications that I have is that it is currently in design for repair, and will, construction will begin in May. So, in case anybody's wondering about that. And take, take a trip over by City Hall, they got the zip sheeting going up on the outside. Work is progressing there, and again, hopefully, we're gonna get the splash pad going here. Startup is around the beginning of April, so then we'll see the toys go up, and then hopefully close that project out.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chiznowski?
I have, I have nothing to report. Thank you.
All right. You're welcome. Mr. O'Malley?
I would like to request a special finance meeting at the upcoming, the first April meeting, to discuss a confidential economic development project.
First of April?
The fourteenth.
The fourteenth?
Yes, thank you.